Good evening. I'm Terri Seitz Parish, Chairperson of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the 30th Annual Commission on Disabilities Awards Ceremony. This virtual ceremony is a first for the commission. We wish we were there with you in person, holding this celebration with a luncheon gathering as we have for the last 29 years. But like everyone else, the commission had to adapt to the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. Although we are socially distant this evening, we are still thrilled to honor our award recipients through an online video presentation. Let me congratulate our seven outstanding award recipients. We are so pleased that county residents from all walks of life made the effort to nominate the people and organizations that we're honoring this evening. Every year, through the awards program, the commission learns valuable lessons from our honorees. We get motivated, we get inspired, we benefit from the new opportunities to better understand the people that we serve. Our honorees and nominators broaden our horizons and help the Commission on Disabilities fulfill its mission. I would like to thank the members of the commission and the Baltimore County staff members who helped produce the video program. I'd like to give a special shout out to Brian Glock, our photographer and videographer, who traveled far and wide to take photographs and the film video clips. Then he put the whole thing together. Wow. Thank you, Brian. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce Baltimore County Executive Johnny Oshewski Jr. The United States and Baltimore County are now facing unprecedented challenges associated with COVID-19 pandemic. County Executive Johnny O has shown himself to be resourceful, caring, and compassionate at a time when people need assistance. I thank Baltimore County for the support it provided to the Commission on Disabilities. We truly appreciate it. On behalf of the commission, I thank County Executive Johnny Oshewski for joining us tonight. Take it away, Johnny O.
Hey, everyone. It's County Executive Johnny O, and it's an honor to be with you today to participate on the Commission on Disabilities 30th Annual Award Ceremony. I thank the Commission on Disabilities for adapting to these challenging times and maintaining this important tradition by holding this ceremony. And I want to congratulate you for reaching such an important milestone. Over these 30 years, you have done so much to promote a culture of inclusion in Baltimore County and to recognize those who have advanced this cause. Together, we can collaborate to ensure our county provides supports and opportunities so that all people with disabilities can participate in all aspects of community life. Like everyone, I look forward to the day when we can have celebrations like this in person. But this award program gives us an opportunity to make new connections, learn new things, and recognize outstanding achievements by our award recipients. Every year, the nominators take the time to share compelling and moving stories about their nominees. This year is no different. Today, we celebrate some incredibly talented and driven individuals who have accomplished so much. Our award winners are selfless and compassionate, doing so much to help others. All of us can learn from their dedication and perseverance. I am so impressed by them. So, on behalf of the people of Baltimore County, I want to recognize and congratulate each award recipient. David Goodman, owner and operator of Mobile Eyewear Services, is the winner of the Accessibility Award. Dr. Terri Massey Burrell, Director of Student Disability Services for Johns Hopkins University, winner of the Advocate Award. Glenn Myers with the Pathfinders for Autism, winner of the Employee Award. Bruce Renke, Food Service Director for Culinary Services Group, is the winner of the Employer Award. Bryce Munusis from Perry Hall High School, winner of the Student of the Year Award. Brandy Corigio, Individual Education Program Chair at Battle Monument School, is the winner of the Teacher of the Year Award. Grace Sims and Ashley Shambly are the winners of the Virtual Employee Award. Again, I want to congratulate all of you. Thank you for everything you do. Stay safe, and thank you for having me.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Cairns. You may remember me from working on Fox 45 for 28 years. Now, I'm pretty much staying at home with my own child as she does virtual school, and I'm so happy to have you in my own backyard today. Who would have thought it last year that we'd be having this event in my backyard? I'm so glad that we are all together for this opportunity here tonight. I'm honored to have the opportunity to host the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities Awards Ceremony once again. And I know it's a little bit different this year because 2020, let's face it, it's been a little crazy. But you know what? I'm a half-glass-full person, and I'm sure you are too, because you're part of this community. And what I mean by that is that we're all being super careful. I am wearing new jewelry, which of course is my face mask I bring everywhere with me. But we're also trying to find the best we can in every element of our lives right now, even though our lives have been turned upside down this year. And that's really what we're here to celebrate is the victories, the way people have been able to handle these situations despite some of the obstacles that we've had to face this year. Right now, I'd like to take a moment and ask you to look around the room, wherever you are, and just smile at the people that you're with. And if you're all by yourself watching this broadcast right now, then I want you to look at me, look at my eyes, and I'm going to ask you to smile with me. Because 2020 is a good year, depending on how you look at it. There have been a lot of victories. While we wish that we were all together at a luncheon, you know what? We're together now, and we're sharing some of these victories and some of these incredible stories and goodwill and volunteerism and wonderful events and groups that still have been able to try to help the disabled in Baltimore County throughout this time period. And that's what we're here to celebrate. And so, our mantra is going to be "Smile and Celebrate," because we are glass-half-filled type of people. I also want to point out that we want to thank our politicians, who are making sure that we are the funding that we can to continue with a lot of our programs. Thank the nurses, the doctors, the teachers, the students, the workers, the organizations, the community members, all the people who have come together to make life better for each one of us. And that's what it counts. That's what community really means, and that's something that we want to keep in mind as we celebrate today, celebrate so many good things that have happened in our community. Now, I have a 10-year-old daughter, and she likes to do this. A round of applause, a round of applause. And that's what I want to ask you to do today. As we talk about each one of our award winners, give them a round of applause and celebrate with them, smile with them, connect. Because while we're not together, maybe we can't hug each other, we certainly, I see you, you see me, and we can smile. All right, so we're all excited. So, let's get started. The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to David Goodman of the Mobile Eyewear Services for receiving its Accessibility Award. David Goodman is the owner of the Mobile Eyewear Services LLC. It's a mobile optical store. It's a family-owned small business that provides eye care to those with disabilities. The business is extremely accessible to those with disabilities because they don't have to leave their homes to get the care they need. An independent optometrist can provide a full, comprehensive eye exam right in the patient's home, or even at a facility, or a board-certified optician can fit the patient in their home with a wide assortment of frames and can deliver them when completed. The repairs and adjustments, no problem. They can also be made in the home. For more than 10 years, David has provided Baltimore County residents with disabilities the eye care they need without having to leave their homes. Even during the pandemic, he's gone out of his way to provide much-needed glasses and repairs to vulnerable people who were unable to get the help they needed. Customers often send David thank-you cards to express their appreciation. David is deserving of the Accessibility Award because of his service and dedication to his patients. So, on behalf of all the citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor David Goodman of Mobile Eyewear Services for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Accessibility Award.
Well, I have been an optician my whole life, since I was in my early twenties. And I used to work in retail settings, and I used to work for an M.D., and we get phone calls from families, "Can you come see my mother? She's in a nursing home." But I was never given permission to do that, I guess because of insurance reasons. So, after 15 years of getting these phone calls, it finally hit me. I'm going to start my own business and try to help these people who can't get out. We have an auto refractor, which gives us a baseline. If they can't communicate, that's what we use. But we also have a chart that they can read if they are communicative. And also, the doctor checks for glaucoma, for cataracts, for anything you would get at a regular eyeglass, a doctor's appointment, we can provide at a facility. Once we get the prescription from the eye doctor, I order what's called a blank from a lab. It almost looks like a hockey puck. And then, from there, I do step two, which is edge them down. So, we have an edger at the office. Once we get the prescription, it's ground into the hockey puck, and then I edge them down to fit the frame. When people give us feedback and thank us and say, "If it wasn't for you guys, my mother would not be able to see. She wouldn't be able to get the glasses that she needs." And we do get a lot of feedback like that. I feel like I really was able to help somebody who needed us. And it just makes me feel great that I could do that for her.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Dr. Terri Massey Burrell for receiving the Advocate Award. Terri is a Baltimore County resident whose passion is to serve students by advocating for equality and access. Living with a physical disability, she's a role model for her students and for all whom she encounters on the Johns Hopkins University Homewood Campus. She's currently serving as a Director of Student Disability Services for Johns Hopkins University. The Director ensures that all accommodations are developed and delivered thoroughly, effectively, and efficiently. The Director builds valuable connections with faculty, graduate teaching assistants, as well as with other staff. Terri supports students both inside and outside the classroom. Shortly after earning her bachelor's degree from Howard University, Terri began more than 25 years of progressive experience in higher education and student affairs. Terri contributed to the delivery of disability services at a variety of institutions. She earned a master's degree at Johns Hopkins and a doctorate from the University of Maryland in College Park. Formerly, Terri served as the Director of Disability Services at Stevenson University, where she was responsible for advising and supporting families during the college transition process, determining disability eligibility, and coordinating services for undergraduate and graduate students with short-term, long-term, unseen, visible disabilities. For 20 years, she worked with various capacities on university system of Maryland campuses, and that even includes Towson University. Terri's passion is to serve students by advocating for equality and access. Her research interest is in the intersection of race, gender, and disability. On behalf of all the citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Dr. Terri Massey Burrell for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Advocate Award. The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Glenn Myers for receiving its Employee Award. Glenn Myers has been a skilled and dedicated member of the Pathfinders for Autism in Baltimore County for the past seven years. In his role with Pathfinders, Glenn provides valuable lessons and guidance to Baltimore County police officers on best practices in communicating with individuals with autism and other intellectual disabilities. In fact, Glenn meets with every new Baltimore County Police Recruit Class to explain the importance of how to communicate with individuals with autism. Glenn participates in scenario training with new officers and veteran officers. This training is extremely important because it gives officers the tools to de-escalate situations and handle unique calls for service. Officer Tyler Rivers has had the privilege to participate in multiple classes that Glenn has taught over the last several years. Glenn was able to teach Officer Tyler valuable skills that he actually had to use in the field to de-escalate situations involving individuals with autism. Glenn is a role model and is creating opportunities for officers to build better relationships with the communities that they serve. On behalf of all the citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Glenn Myers for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Employee Award.
Because my friends might not be able to communicate.
Okay. Why else is this training important?
Because I wanted to tell you that wander elopement and communication skills, and somebody might not be able to hear.
Okay. What are some of the other challenges that the police officers may face?
Elopement and please, behavioral issues, and de-escalate.
Okay. Who's safety do we always want?
The police.
Okay. Do you think you're safe for your safety?
And my friends.
Okay.
And I don't want any bad reactions.
Okay. Is that how we want the interactions to go?
Yes.
How do we want the interactions to go?
Safely. And I don't want any of my friends to have to get tamed. Pathfinders for Autism and how to train them and de-escalate the situation, and help wander elopement, and some of them might not have good communication skills. Some of them might be deaf, some of them might not hear. Officer Rivers, thank you for nominating me. Baltimore County, stay safe.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Bruce Renke and the Culinary Services Group for receiving its Employer Award. Bruce Renke is the Food Service Director for that group. Bruce oversees a large kitchen operation that prepares and delivers hundreds of meals daily to a variety of customers. Bruce and his group are champions for training people with intellectual disabilities for competitive, integrated work. The company understands and has applied the principles of career exploration, job carving, and job customization. Culinary Services Group has also been a good partner with Gallagher Services by collaborating on employment and training opportunities. The partnership involves an employer engagement model that assesses the needs of a work site and examines specific job duties. Kitchen operations may be adapted to fully realize a new hire skills. This leverages success for the person hired and creates a win-win for the new employee as well as for the kitchen. Bruce Renke goes the extra mile to make the program work. He strives to resolve barriers. He has helped program participants with transportation options and has tailored kitchen training to meet a new hire's specific needs. Culinary Services Group recognizes the abilities of people, sets high expectations, and gives support through regular mentoring and onsite coaching. Through the partnership with Gallagher Services, Bruce has helped approximately 10 people explore different duties in the kitchen. Not all of them were hired, but all the participants have learned work skills and have a better idea of what they want for a job. Culinary Services did hire a Gallagher Services client named Sean, who completed the training and performs a variety of tasks for the kitchen. He packages hundreds of meals for delivery, provides quality control, cleans, and stocks inventory. On his own time, Bruce mentored Sean, discussing pros and cons of the kitchen work and allowing Sean to make his own decisions in response to transportation issues. Bruce made schedule adjustments based on the MTA mobility schedules. He's even driven Sean home many times when they ran into some problems. Between mentoring and helping with the transportation, Bruce Renke has become an important natural support for Sean. Over the years, it has become clear that that group takes its mission seriously to support people with intellectual disabilities and other barriers to employment in finding meaningful and competitive work. For these reasons, Culinary Services Group and Bruce Renke deserve the Employer of the Year Award. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Bruce Renke and Culinary Services Group for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Employer Award.
Well, Gallagher Services is part of Catholic Charities here in Timonium, and their job is to provide services for individuals with intellectual disabilities. And our part is to provide meals and food for them on a daily basis for those individuals who are part of the day program. With regard to training, what we do, we had the opportunity to develop and implement a vocational training program at Gallagher Services for their clients. This consists of daily classroom instruction and in-kitchen training for anywhere from six to nine months, hopefully with the intention of guiding them into a career path. We have a classroom set up at the Gallagher Services kitchen, and the participants, they'll spend a couple of hours each morning just in classroom instruction, and then they spend the rest of their day, about four hours, in the kitchen at the Gallagher Services doing on-the-job training. We have one person right now, Sean Haney, who is a part-time employee with us. He came on board back in February of this year, and he's just doing a real stand-up job. He just, he improves more and more each week. He's loved by all of our team members. He's made new friendships, and I think if you were to ask him, he would tell you that he really enjoys coming to work each day.
I like doing my work. I wash dishes, I put the stock away, and I go on the food delivery.
It was a surprise to hear that we were nominated for the award. It's humbling. We don't look for recognition. You learn very early on in food service to not wait for recognition. You're usually only as good as your last meal. But however, we're really blessed here at the Catholic Charities campus because we're surrounded by a group of people who are just terrific. They appreciate the work that we do. We appreciate them. We try to bring our entire team concept that we have within Culinary Services Group to Catholic Charities. We consider ourselves a true partner of our client here at Catholic Charities and at Gallagher Services. We're all members of the same team. We all have the same goals. We try to not only live out CSG's 25 guiding principles as we do our business day in and day out, but we also try to embrace the vision and mission of Catholic Charities, which is to uphold the values of love and service and teaching. And I think we do that pretty well. And I think we do it very well when it comes to dealing with their clients and within our vocational training program and bringing folks along. We truly don't regard the clients here at Gallagher Services as individuals who are They're just people like the rest of us. We're all unique, we're all different, we all have challenges in our lives. Some folks' challenges are just more visual than others. They're easier to see. But beyond that, we're all the same. And it's an honor and a blessing to be part of their lives, and it's an even greater blessing that they're part of our lives.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Bryce Munusis for receiving its Student of the Year Award. Bryce suffered a stroke as a baby, which has left him unable to walk independently. His gross motor skills were strongly affected, limiting his ability to control his arms and his legs. Bryce uses a power wheelchair to get around. Bryce is currently attending Perry Hall High School, entering 10th grade. Lori Ludwig met Bryce when he started kindergarten at Chapel Hill Elementary School and had the honor of being his assistant throughout his time in elementary school. He liked to refer to Lori as his sidekick. Bryce is the picture of positivity, perseverance, and strength. His smile and laughter are a constant gift to everyone. Bryce is a hard worker who never lets his disability stop him from doing whatever he needs to get done. To know him is to love him. Bryce has maintained excellent grades throughout his years in elementary, middle, and now high school, earning many awards for his academic achievement. More importantly, Bryce is an inspiration to all. He has positivity, and he never lets his inability to do something stop him from achieving his goals. He simply finds another way to get it done. He has made many friends in elementary school and is still in touch with them. These and other students learn a lot about patience and compassion from Bryce. He wasn't always the fastest or the first pick to play, but he was always included in some way. The other students rearranged tables, games, or anything necessary to make sure that he could somehow be included in all those activities. They didn't see the chair, they just saw the person that was just like them. Lori is asked frequently about him by teachers and staff at Chapel Hill Elementary. Often, Lori hears how he has inspired someone having a rough day, and he's trying to even now keep them moving on. Bryce has made quite an impression on everyone who has met him. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Bryce Munusis.
Are you doing school from home these days?
Yes.
Working from home. What do you think about working from home?
I personally like...
Think it's okay?
Yeah.
That's good. So, as far as what you're doing at school, what class do you like? Algebra?
Yeah.
You good with formulas?
Yeah.
...to become a member of the National Honor Society because of his grades and I guess his community service and that sort of thing. And so, he's made the effort to fill out the application and try to get accepted.
So, Bryce gets good grades?
Yes. Currently, he has a 4.0.
Do you know Lori Ludwig?
Yeah.
How do you know Lori?
She was my eighth in elementary school.
Did you get along well with Lori Ludwig?
Yeah.
You have a big smile when you talk about Lori.
Yes.
So, Lori nominated you to be the Student of the Year for Baltimore County. Congratulations, Bryce.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you thank Lori Ludwig?
Thank you, Ms. Lori.
They hit it off right away. Bryce, you know, can't, his speech isn't as comprehensible because of his disability and his inability to have the breadth of support for speech. So, she was able to understand him from day one, and she actually understands him more than I do, or a little easier than I do. So, yes, it ended up, it turned out to be a great partnership between Bryce and Ms. Lori.
How do you like to work on nature and the rivers?
Because they are means saving. Because the earth needs saving and, um, the e-eruption, erosion stuff to go to college and take math or learn math, science, and Chinese.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Brandy Corrigio for receiving its Teacher of the Year Award. Brandy wears many hats at Battle Monument School. She's the elementary team leader, school testing coordinator, and a job coach. She is also on the instructional leadership team, the crisis team, and the equity team. Battle Monument School is a public, separate day school for students between the ages of three and 21 who have significant intellectual disabilities. She began her career at Battle Monument School in 2005. When Battle Monument School began developing a program for students who require extensive behavioral supports, Brandy transferred to that program, and she worked with the middle grade students. Then Brandy became interested in more administrative tasks and was promoted to the team leader for elementary and middle school students. She supported these classes by helping teachers develop lesson plans and obtain the materials they needed. She also supported teachers by making sure all individual education program papers were submitted on time and edited the documents as they were needed. Brandy then became the Individual Education Program Chair and Student Testing Coordinator. As the IEP Chair, Brandy completes all aspects of the IEP teams, including the scheduling of the meetings, reviewing all the paperwork, and sending the draft documents for parents to review. Then they, she also has to conduct and take minutes for the team and finalize those documents that go home to the parents. As testing coordinator, Brandy helps teachers identify skills to be assessed and advises on what materials are needed. As testing requirements became more complex, Brandy worked collaboratively with the teachers to identify the goals, and she developed all artifacts. Ms. Corrigio has taken on the additional responsibilities for being a job coach at students' work sites as well. Working with a transition coordinator, she helps identify work sites and formulates a strategy for teaching students aspects of the work site. She also collaborates with classroom teachers to determine which students are a good match for a particular job site. Franklin Square Hospital, Red Brick Station, and the Exchangeery at White Marsh are a few of the partnerships that she's been able to develop. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Brandy Corrigio for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Teacher of the Year Award.
It was my senior year in high school. I found myself one day up in the life skills classroom, and I just, it just, everything just kind of clicked. I fell in love with not only the teacher of that classroom, but the students. There was just something about it that I just started to enjoy and realized that I could make a difference in these, in these students' lives. And so at that point, at the end of that year, I changed what I'd wanted to do and went to college to become a teacher. I was completely shocked when I read the email about receiving the award. I didn't know anything about it. Caught me off guard. My mouth probably dropped when I read it, and I immediately emailed my principal and was like, what's, what is going on? What's this all about? You know, as far as I feel, probably everyone at my school deserves this award. We're a team, we're a family. This, we couldn't make our students, we couldn't let them have the successes that they have if we didn't have everyone that is a part of our school. It's just, you know, I wish I could give, share this with everyone at my school, from the teachers to the paras to our additional adult assistants that a lot of times they get very, very overlooked, and they play probably the most important role here at our school. We couldn't do our jobs without them. They come to work every day, and they don't complain, and they roll their sleeves up, and they get right in there and help with, you know, the changing of the students. They're there for the days when the students are having a hard day and showing the challenging behaviors. They're right there for it all, wiping noses and, you know, everything. I hope that people in the community will want to come in and see our students and see the amazing things that we do here with them and the amazing things that the students do. I think a lot of people would be shocked at what our students can do, and they can teach them some life lessons. And I think that would be good this day and age and everything that's going on in the
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Grace Sims and Ashley Chambley for receiving its Virtual Employee Award. Especially this year, this has been crucial. Grace and Ashley have chosen a career where they advocate every day for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. During these challenging times of COVID-19, it seemed that services and a means to socialize for people with disabilities fell to the wayside. However, Grace and Ashley rose to the occasion and created a virtual service that not only provided support, it created a positive atmosphere that has brought people together and put smiles on the faces of those that needed it the most. Grace and Ashley's creativity has inspired other colleagues and created a virtual community that continues to grow in size as well as laughter. Their advocacy to create a platform where people with disabilities can come together, socialize, and learn new things while stuck at home is worthy of recognition. It is clear that they have improved the quality of life for the participants. Several times each week, Grace and Ashley put on their goggles, their lab coats, and become mad scientists for a few hours. Why do they do this, you may ask? Well, because they have a large group of stay-at-home scientists that eagerly wait for this part of the day. When COVID-19 arrived, a lot of the individuals with disabilities became stuck at home. They miss seeing their friends and participating in normal life activities. But it was during this time that Grace and Ashley went into their lab and cooked up numerous activities that people could participate in virtually. Within no time, they became a hit, and the quality of life for those stuck at home began to significantly improve. Their days are now filled with joy and laughter, and they're learning as well. So what exactly do these mad scientists do that keeps bringing people back for more? Well, for one, they're lighting things on fire and occasionally making things explode. Who doesn't like fire? But beyond the fire excitement, they're experimenting with all kinds of things that the participants can play along with at home. Now, there's a disclaimer. Don't encourage playing with fire at home. Just watch them do it safely. One of the funniest things their boss recalls is when everyone tried to turn an egg to rubber. They put their eggs in a tall drinking glass. Next, they poured in some vinegar into the glass, and then they covered it. They let it soak overnight, and a week later, they came back to see if the egg was going to be rubbery. Well, Ashley put on her goggles, held the egg in her hand, and the participants, participants at home grabbed their eggs. You could feel the suspense. Ashley was the first to bounce her rubber egg. Three, two, one, she bounced it, and, uh, it didn't bounce. It exploded, yolk everywhere. Although there was a big mess to clean up, there was a lot of cheers and laughter. And really, that's what it's all about. It has once again brought people together. There are multiple ways to advocate for someone. Sometimes the best advocacy is creating laughter and bringing people together. Grace and Ashley are true advocates as their passion, creativity, and humor has improved the lives for so many people who are stuck at home. We just hope they don't set off too many fire alarms or sprinklers. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Grace Sims and Ashley Chambley for receiving the Commission on Disabilities Virtual Employee Award.
About the beginning of May, we had a big meeting about how we had to get the Zoom up and running. Everybody was asked, like, well, what do you want to do? What do you want to do? So I told everybody, my supervisor volunteered me to do science. So I said, sure, I'll do science as long as I get to blow things up. And everybody was like, yeah.
I was volunteered for arts and crafts because I do it in my spare time, and then somehow we just kind of ended up together. All of our individuals from our program, and not just from this building either. We have them from our facility on the east side, down at our main building. The email goes out every weekend or Monday morning, and everybody has the information to log in, and they can participate in whatever activities they want. I think they're great. I think in the beginning, when everybody was unsure, they weren't able to see anybody. They didn't know what was going on. But now that we have this technology, we can let our individuals see their peers, meet people from other facilities that they've never met before, and we've seen some friendships blossom. Particularly one participant here and another one from our east side, they talk every time as soon as they see each other. They're so excited. I think everyone's gotten used to the routine.
Yeah.
So we're more comfortable with how we can bring in the crowd when they get really excited about an experiment or a craft.
Yeah, at first, everybody was still kind of shy and like not talking that much, and now they're like, yeah, 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 we know the rules.
Gave us a topic, and they said, go for it.
Yeah.
We weren't expecting this at all. We're really thankful. Thank you so much.
Like, we didn't do this with the intention of winning anything. It was just like, all right, individuals are home, bored, let's try to entertain them. So, I mean, just them having fun is...
But it's super awesome. Super awesome to be recognized for, for our work on Zoom.
Yeah.
Congratulations to all our winners again. Let's give them a round of applause. And if you're in a room with one of the winners, then please give them a big smile and congratulate them. And stay connected. Don't let it end here. If you know one of the winners, call them up over the next few days. Talk to them about it. Send them an email or text them a congratulations as well. Because we've got to keep this good energy going, keep the smiles going, and try to keep our community as tight-knit as possible despite some of the odds. Because this is good energy, and we've got to keep it going. So on behalf of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities, thanks for joining me in my backyard here, and have a very good evening and a great year. Maybe we'll see you next year at the luncheon, or maybe we'll be back in my backyard. Either way, I know we're going to have some great new stories to tell because you're great people. Thank you.